Okay, call this meeting to order and have roll call.
Hes.
Here.
Bite.
Here.
Bob is gone.
She's gone to NACO trip to Washington.
Okay.
And she's going to be giving a presentation on the Hill.
Okay.
To a group, so anyway, that's where she's at.
I'm here and you can call your meeting, I guess, when Mark gets here.
Dean, would you lead us in a prayer, please?
Sure. Dear Lord heavenly God, as we come together today to deal with the issues of the county, help, join us to enlighten us in answers that we need, be with everybody who's traveling today out on the roads, and keep everybody safe. Amen.
Amen. Stand behind the flag salute. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yeah, the agenda was properly posted in compliance with open meeting act.
Okay, thank you. Item five, consider an act on the minutes, and we do not have any minutes.
No minutes.
So, no minutes. We'll get them caught up.
Next week.
Well, Thursday, we're having payroll meeting. Comments from the public on the below agenda items? See, nobody's signed up. No. Item seven, CED inspection invoice and report of conference invoice. This was supposed to have been, we supposed to have had this last week, and Donnie come over to give us the books and stuff, and Dean, I think he gave you and Cindy your book.
Mm-hmm.
And he, he gave me my book.
Yeah.
So, this is just the invoice.
Okay.
For that.
Do we make a motion on this too?
Yep, I'll make a motion that we approve the invoice and report of conference invoice, forty-two seventy-three sixty-five.
I'll second that.
Forty-two seventy-three sixty-five.
Yes.
And you made a second?
Yes.
And Dean seconded, so it's been moved, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Hes.
Aye.
Bite.
Aye.
Motion carried. And Dean, you can look at that, I don't think there's a place to sign, but there is on this one here.
Okay, I guess you only need one copy of that.
Um, okay, this is, this is for, uh, I guess B, isn't it?
I don't have the little stamp.
That's in the second drawer.
The sound's not on, Mindy.
Okay, would you, just a minute, I'm calling Alex.
Alex.
Is Brandon gone?
Okay.
Yeah, he's gone.
Dean doesn't have his stamp, it's in the drawer on the left side of Cindy's desk, and Dean just came in and said there's no sound. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. Hey, Mark, I didn't try hard enough.
Hey, Mark.
Well, now it's a solid line, maybe it's working.
It's working now.
I said, maybe it is. It's a solid.
I second it.
Oh, wait a minute.
What's wrong, Mindy?
Here. I found out this before I was gonna do this.
That one's flashing, the other one isn't.
Mark made a motion and Jerry seconded, so, Martin, do you say aye?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
My last gen puts on.
Okay, so Mark is here.
Thank you, Ellen.
You're welcome. Mark, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Jerry, are you here?
Yes.
Are you here?
Alvin, are you here? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Alvin's absent.
You hadn't asked him.
Alvin, are you here? Okay.
It's still not on.
And you guys have minutes with your staff if you wanna read them and make sure they're okay. Okay, now you-
Item B, resolution thirteen, establishment of ETR contingencies account. What it is, we had to have, there's a flow chart that Cindy's got that the auditors and them have approved that shows the process, and we have to establish an ETR account, and that's what item B is. And item C is a resolution fourteen for establishment of an account within the CBRI fund, restricted account. And I talked to Cindy, and she's talked back to the auditors, and this is what we have to do, we have to approve this, and then the excise board has to sign these also. And what it is, is we've gotten ETR money in for our construction of our STP project out at Clyde Road, three miles. I don't totally agree with what's happened because they've let another county in our district proceed when they're negative, but that's another fight, gotta forget that. But they may grant county go out and borrow the money through an ETR account that allows us to advance construct, advance finance for the construction. Whenever this gets passed through, then the federal money will be repaid, and then we will turn around and repay the money back to the fund. And so, they, they let us advance finance the-
Borrow, compete, and pay borrow.
It's a loan, right? Yeah, it's a loan.
It's basically just a-
Money shuffle.
Money shuffle.
Would there be some interest?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
No, no interest, it's a straight pass through.
Okay.
So, that's what we're doing, but to, for everybody, when we approached Penny about doing that, we had to have an account set up, so we went back and talked, and they give Cindy and Penny a flow chart of that events that's supposed to happen. And as near as, as everybody can tell, this is exactly what we're supposed to do to, to do that. So, we're establishing these two accounts, resolution thirteen and fourteen.
I see she's got those on two different, there's a B and a C.
Yes, there is, so we'll make a, we'll make a motion to each one.
Is the federal money already appropriated, ma'am?
The federal money comes through, last month, they said that the money's gonna be there.
Okay.
And that's, this is the other thing, I talked to Penny about this too, the money, the federal money was held up because the government was shut down. We didn't know whether that was gonna come through, but it did. We have to have this on the Oklahoma ODOT transportation meeting, okay? If we don't get it done today, then it has to slide another month, and that's gonna affect everything. So, I talked to Penny about that, and she said if we get this passed through, they're gonna get the check okayed and stuff, and so I can take it down to the, to ODOT today.
It has been apportioned, and it's due to go through as being appropriated this morning, so.
Yeah, and that was a holdup that we had last week because it hadn't been appropriated, so we had to, we waited till you guys are gonna do that this, today. But, it shortened our timeframe up to a week and a day to today.
Right.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve resolution thirteen to establish the contingency account.
I'll second that.
Okay, I, it's been moved, it's been my seconded. All in favor?
Hes.
Aye.
Bite.
Aye.
I would make a motion on item C, resolution fourteen for establishment of an account within the CBRI fund as a restricted account, I would make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Hes.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Or is you're supposed to say that?
Yeah.
Okay, did you guys make a motion on your minutes?
I moved to approve.
Hey, uh, Jerry?
Aye.
Okay, um, you guys, those are coming around, so you, A and B are coming around.
Do we need motions on this?
Um, do they have to make a motion on that too?
Yes, they do.
Yes, you do.
Yes, they do.
Do you have their agenda?
Can it be one motion or separate motions?
It's gonna have to be two separate motions.
They're listed separately on your agenda.
They're listed separately on the agenda.
Move to approve resolution number thirteen.
Second.
Uh, Jerry?
Aye.
Mark?
Okay, uh, item D, monthly appropriations.
Okay. Uh, we start.
Oh, what that next, start there.
That's bad.
Thank you.
Make a motion for fourteen?
Yeah.
Second.
Mark?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
That's, they're, they're on D, and that, your monthly appropriations are on G.
Do we need to sign a copy of this?
Yeah, did you sign that? Okay, your C and D items are apparently not, you are, you guys have to acknowledge the fact that there's getting ready to be two new accounts for the Medford Fire Department and the Fairbanks.
Okay, commission will act on that first?
Well, they know about it, and it's been approved through their meeting already.
Do we need motions to acknowledge those two?
Yeah.
Okay, move to acknowledge, uh, item C, Medford Fire Department, COC.
Hey, uh, Jerry?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye. And make a motion for approve B.
Okay, Mark?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
You guys are gonna do D before F.
B?
Well, they're working on E, and their F is, is E, so they are-
Well, our monthly appropriations, okay. So, they're gonna have to skip over D to E.
They're gonna have to skip over F.
Where's the F and G?
To G.
Yeah. I'm not a practice, I haven't done this in a while.
So, we're not doing E or F then?
Well, E, yeah, I've got the paperwork for that.
And what's it all about?
The, okay, um, there is an error in the fact that Holly Fire Department got some of Deer Creek Fire Department, or Deer Creek Fire Department got some of Holly's money. It was a typographical error, and you guys just have to acknowledge, you guys, that it's been corrected. All paperwork is with it. I guess you do have to sign it.
Did Mike Williams come in and sign it?
Yes, he did.
Both have been notified, yeah?
And I talked to Jeff at the Storm Spotter School in Palm Creek, and he was aware of what had happened and stuff.
Yeah.
He, they were okay with it, you know, of course. Could take if they get the money back.
Okay, you're just waiting on one. Or do you say you need to make a motion to skip down to-
Well-
G?
They're, on their agenda, their monthly appropriations, they could go ahead and do everything else, uh, D, E, and F.
Okay, well-
And then, we did, that's the papers there, you can hand in to Mark, that's what they, that's G for them.
Okay.
That's what they're-
Okay.
We need to do E, the transfers or appropriations, so they can, they can do that.
We're gonna move the transfers or appropriations?
No, we, we don't have to move.
Did you have to move to sign monthly appropriations?
We have to move to approve and have the appropriations.
Two meetings going on at the same time don't ever work out very well, do they?
Yes, and I so moved.
Okay.
Our folks, Dean seconded, all in favor?
Hes.
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
Did you, did you get my information on this exchange?
And this is, this is the transfers or appropriations.
Okay.
Uh, Form 240 and 237. And this here shows all the paperwork, what we have to do, have what they have to follow about the establishment of their accounts.
So, this is E that's coming up?
Yes, this is E.
Do we have to make a movement for transfers or appropriations?
Yes, we do.
Are we viewing or what?
Well, we, we're gonna look them over here and that stuff, and then we're gonna okay it to.
Is that who you mean? Mindy, has that been built in the system?
Pardon me?
So that you can write that check this morning, has that been built in the system?
Which one?
The one point four million.
Okay.
Oops, sorry.
Does your not a PO for that?
Well, I don't see the POs, I never see the POs, and-
Okay.
I just give the checks, so I just wanna make sure.
Oh, Alex is planning on that, we've already talked about it.
He's planning on building it?
No, no. Maddie, Jack, she was saying that had it gone through the meeting today.
Right, I just wondered if it was built already so the check could be written.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I know Max needs it.
Yes. We already have that special one.
Dean, I wish you were here, that's, that's the first, this is on 240, uh, I don't see anything about the 237.
And or 237.
Oh, God, yeah.
Or 237 and or 240.
240, so we signed the 240, that's it. Okay, this is the back, close the paperwork, I'll work here.
What do we have here?
That goes.
Cents.
The over is going on top.
Better, got it or another?
Okay, here's the paper clip.
I don't know, Penny was asking her, do you?
I need the top part, you guys do the bottom part.
It's all there.
What nickel do you see?
Well, that's- The nickel that's marked out.
It's three cents.
A three cent, so good.
It looks like she's corrected it. Alex, did you add them up to see?
No.
Okay, you might wanna add them up and see if they total the- Total, total.
One, all three is at the top.
Well, she marked her at the one, I think she was correcting it. Usually Cindy's on the calculator, Cindy vomit.
Yeah.
He's not here.
And Alex had totaled some of them for us, okay.
Alex does a good job. To the total, the top part.
Actually, when you like to modify, now the other three will be marked out.
Okay, that's good. It works?
It needed to be marked out, so zero, zero.
Okay, on item E, on our agenda, uh, transfers or appropriations, I make the motion to approve transfers.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dean, aye, all in favor?
Hes.
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
Okay, Hes, there's purchase orders and travel claims.
Okay, I was looking to see if there's anything else we needed for the, uh, excise board, I don't see anything, so that being said, we'll purchase orders and travel claims review.
Make a motion to review the purchase order and travel claims?
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Hes.
Aye.
Aye.
I did sign down there.
Oh, down there, way down there. I was looking over here with-
I think they get a little fast when they stick their stickers on, so.
I just, where did that transfer go, if you guys just sign, is it, is this above?
That is it.
No, this is it. No, this is it. Do you guys need to make a motion to?
Approve appropriations?
Mm-hmm.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mark?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Okay, you want to go for transfers?
I'm going to approve transfers.
Okay.
Second.
Jerry?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Okay, great good. I think we got ourselves covered.
Our work here is doing. Remove two. Sure.
Second.
Uh, Jerry?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Very good guys. Thank you. And thank you for hiring Mark.
Oh, yeah, no problem. I did. I provided.
You gotta take care of.
All right, see you guys.
You pedaled this fast.
Yes, I did.
Order inch warm weather.
Oh, I got it coming.
Open that side door up.
We'll see you again.
See ya. See you later.
Bye, Jerry.
We on move four? Yes, we are. Move four we're starting now. Are you ready?
Yeah.
This is a new folder.
We'll leave right here.
They're singles.
Okay, they're warm.
This here, we've all go in that folder. Okay. There'll be a few of them that you'll have to sign up on top, Dean. You know, on payments and W ten, W three. Some of them have been signed. Now sort of on the other folder. I come in here the other day and my whole tray was full. I see Cindy got the day that we're signing blankets and stuff. She got out of the, got out of here.
Yeah.
Was she?
She's in Washington. She's supposed to testify before, uh, a panel about something. Had to give a speech and stuff.
Transportation, wasn't it?
Yes, I think so. These are still in that folder there. Okay, we usually do that.
Did they still have quite a bit of coffee yet? We didn't get Max that cup.
There's not much left. There's a little.
Every man for himself on Monday morning.
Right.
No, just laying on top of it. Just let you.
This was a single one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like that's thirty some tape.
Yeah, it's about due. Either tape or another one. We got it. Tape worked just fine.
Scott, here's a, a deal for you guys for tire repair, but you don't have a ticket with it. Okay.
Did you lose your game?
I wasn't playing again.
I wasn't playing.
I'm just checking up on you. I was just checking up on you.
You were checking up on me?
Mm-hmm.
What did I do?
I don't know. Something on Facebook.
I'm on Facebook? No, I just comment yes and no or like or not like. My, my new great nephew, turned a year old yesterday, his aunt Emily took a whole bunch of pictures of him. He's so cute.
My bad.
His name is Jack and he looks on good. I guess I didn't live so far away. Which one did she pull so I can tell Alex?
This farmer's grain.
Farmer's grain? Farmer's green?
This is one tire repair seventeen fifty.
So it's on there?
Yeah, but this is kind of a statement. Here's this one. You can have that back and then I'll get nothing. Or something, they can email me.
I make a motion to approve purchase orders in tribal counties.
I'll second that.
If it's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Blanket purchase orders. I make a motion to approve blanket purchase orders.
I'll second.
If it's been moved and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
Purchase orders are ready. Here's this one that I pulled. Okay. Thank you. You can do that anymore, so.
You don't want to do it. I have a shirt on.
And that was the one thing when I came to work here. Debbie goes, "Do you want to be Melinda, or do you want to be Mindy?" And I thought about it, but we're going to do Mindy.
She was a good clerk, wasn't she?
She was a good clerk, yes she was. I miss her very much.
Me too.
Actually, I guess that would've been Becky, because I came the last year Becky was in office.
Oh, did she? The beautiful soul.
Can't believe how many scooters were still at.
For the cold. They don't like them waiting at the bus stop. Freezing.
When I was a kid, they didn't care if we rotted at the bus stop.
I know, we walked uphill both ways. Yeah. We can tell those kind of stories when we get old.
Well, we had two of you kids on our bus stop that kept switching our bus around. And we ended up on a bus, and we'd be the last one picked up and the last one brought back.
Yep.
Of course, I went to a grade school that was made for this school system.
Where were you at?
Midwest city. And I think there were seventy-five kids in our kindergarten class.
Item H, change order number eleven through the Lamont Fire Department. Add closer smoke seals to doors oh five, oh four, oh five, five oh six. And six dollars.
Let's see that, Debbie. They fumbled through that. Uh, we need a motion to change order number eleven.
Yes.
Make a motion to change order number eleven to Lamont Fire Department. Add closer smoke seals to doors oh four, oh five, four, five oh six.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Jim Aldridge will be signed off on it, so. Item I. Two thousand nineteen oh eight, resolution disposing of Brother Laser Printer. Inventory number two oh one point oh six for the accessory office.
Entertaining a motion?
Yes, I would.
Uh, I make a motion that, uh, for the disposing of the Brother Laser, uh, printer on resolution two oh one nine dash oh eight. Invoice number H two oh one point six for the accessory office.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. O dot plan of proposed resurface and concrete pavement rehabilitation. SSR two twenty-seven B, oh twenty-six and a hole. SR dash J dash P, thirty-one, three seven two, oh four and a hole, for D three. This is your, uh... Make check payable to Department of Transportation. Division invoice. Do you have to, do you have to pay this, or this is through the CVRI?
Is that, is that what the transfer was for?
No.
No?
No.
Now, don't be giving District One money away.
Don't do that.
I could do something like that today.
This, this here is, uh, Department of Transportation invoice. It says make check payable and mail to the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Due upon receipt. Looks like that missed the, uh... Purchasing item. I don't know about all that, baby.
Well, it's this, it's this ODOT thing.
Mm-hmm.
J.
No, no.
Was it in the purchase orders?
I don't know.
That's, uh...
Do you want me to call Alex?
Well, we can call Alex or I'll call Donnie, whichever you want to call for.
Unless, unless this is, uh, the beginning of...
It's, it's gonna be the be- beginning of your project, but...
It's black though.
Yeah. But are you asking for ETR money?
Okay, they're questioning this.
Are you applying for ETR money?
All that was already, I think, already taken care of.
Well, that's what I thought, too.
But I, I'm not for sure.
She's probably, she said she'll try to help.
Okay.
But like I said, I'm not for sure what this... How this relates to that. And before we sign off for...
Well, we...
That little chunk of money, yeah.
Alex?
Yes, sir.
This invoice that you got here, where did you get that?
Well, I've never seen it.
Okay.
I never bought it.
That's good news.
We're getting more information on this.
This, this invoice down here, this establishes the deal, but, but I think what it is is we got a clerical error. I think this is supposed to be D one instead of D three. Because that right there happens to coincide with the exact amount that they said we needed to track. That we got invoiced for, so it's just mislabeled, that's all it is.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Well, that's the only one you got, is what I'm asking you, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as I know, 'cause this is the only one I've seen.
Okay. Well, we're just gonna note that that's a clerical error. Instead of D, it's D three, it should be D one.
Okay.
Really, Max?
You wanted us to, you wanted us to pay for it, huh?
Well, I thought I'd try.
You know, maybe.
I would make a motion to approve the payment of the invoice for one million, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents for the Clyde Road, uh, rehabilit- uh, rehabilitation for the resurfacing of that road. SSR two twenty-seven B, oh twenty-six, SR dash JP number thirty-one, three seven two, oh four in the hole for District One. Okay.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yes?
It's been moved and it's been seconded. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
There's no place to sign on here. I guess we'll just sign down here below, but... There should be a PO fixed. Mindy, there should be a PO fixed for it. I'm gonna go ahead and sign it.
Okay.
Didn't consider it there, too, but we okayed it, so.
Okay.
Cindy, our Penny will have to have that.
A check?
Yeah.
You taking that check today?
Yes, I'll take it today. We got the account set up, so whatever numbers we have to apply to that to make the...
As long as we've done the transfer and if you had the purchase order for the warrant. Did you do, did you have that?
Yeah, well, we should be getting it today, but, I mean, that ought to be part of the... We had to set the account up before we could get the transfer.
Yeah, but you gotta have a purchase order to write the warrant, right?
Right.
Okay.
But you have to have an account to...
Right.
Issue a purchase order from, so that's why I was getting that.
Did you have a purchase order then?
I don't know for sure.
Okay. That's the only thing I didn't know, 'cause I knew the transfer was going through and the account was already set up. Just didn't know about the purchase order and the warrant.
Well, I assumed that we had one. All right.
Uh, yeah.
I don't do purchase orders.
We talked about...
Yeah.
She had, somebody had to have it today.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we gotta, if we don't get it today, then it pushes the project back a month.
Yeah, you don't wanna do that.
Well, especially the way money is down there. Okay, takes care of item J. Item K, courthouse renovation relocation of the courthouse offices.
Well, it looks like she has a quote, but I didn't know if you guys could discuss it or not.
Well, I think if it has to do with the renovation.
I think it's on the agenda. It's on the agenda.
This is a quote from two men in a truck, movers for moving the courthouse. Uh, services, it says, are quoted for six thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars to seven thousand seven seventy-two. So, which one is it? I guess it's...
It could be, they're just kinda...
An estimate?
An estimate, yeah.
But that's just moving our furniture?
That's, that's moving our, I, I believe that that's gonna be moving from everybody out of the courthouse.
Right, the furniture, not, not your, not our equipment?
No, not your...
No, that's just furniture, that's just furniture, fine heavy things, nothing that's cooked.
Yeah, it says, uh... What a quantity, filing cabinets, uh, desk, office, chairs, arms, table conference.
Furniture. Right?
Huh?
Furniture, right?
Furniture, yeah. Copiers, cadence.
Max, do you know what kind of work needs to be done on the mobile homes before they're moved?
Well, we went over, in fact, we're going over again to look at them to, to get that stuff nailed down, what we need.
I see.
You know? But I was hoping, and Cindy's the one that's been talking to Brady Sidwell. We made some progress on the electric. I talked to Pat Lyons about what we was gonna need for electrical supply, how much that was gonna have to be as far as single phase to three phase, what we was adding there. And he called me back Saturday and I got some more information for him on what the breaker boxes were off of that. And he's getting that information together, up, supposed to be bringing it to Brady. Or to us.
And septic? They have a septic hookup with, uh, city, I guess?
Yeah.
So that's already...
He said there's sewer there.
Okay.
And we're not gonna, I don't believe we're gonna hook gas up to it because we'll use the electric.
For heat?
For heat, yeah. That way I'll save running a gas line and that kind of stuff, you know?
Yep.
Okay. Well, and then here's one from... This is the movers that, that they talked to with, with Kyler Construction when they talked to Ryan. That he had mentioned, uh, about getting some information. That's what these two men in a truck are. I think we'll note that and we'll, we may talk about that more Thursday when...
Okay.
When everybody's here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We had a topic this, last time.
Did we?
Yeah. I did.
I, I hadn't seen that, but I know that we had, uh, that, that ought to make three now that we had restrictions from...
What was the others, too? Were they about seven thousand two?
Yeah.
Well, it was the same, it was two men in a truck movers who had this.
You had three estimates from the same movers?
No.
Oh. Sorry. I misunderstood.
But we have to have it in writing and that's what we didn't have in writing. And I don't know, Cindy was talking to the other, so maybe she's gotten it right and I don't know. And I noticed that that, uh, Mindy was, was something else. We don't have to talk about that. Deals. But we're gonna talk about that Thursday.
Okay. So we need to go back in her lap for Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
She, Cindy told me she was gonna keep that courthouse renovation, so if something come up that we needed to address...
Yeah, that's good.
We could deal with that. But, uh, it's a good point, what we need, because we've talked about bathrooms, you know? In there, and we know we're gonna have to supply that. Fix the commode, put the weight and stuff back. Plus, we want, somebody suggested the little privacy wall out of the store shelf. And I said, "I don't think that's the worst it gets."
Funny guess, Scott Falkenberg.
Yeah. I hope that man makes it over this.
Hope we all do.
Yeah.
Me too. I sent this in a lot of prayers.
Yeah. Scott, did he get your problem fixed? Temporarily fixed.
Which one?
The one in the bathroom about the drain?
Oh, downstairs? Yes, it's temporarily fixed.
Yeah. He told me, Scott did, Saturday, that they were gonna... The construction company was gonna take a look at it, too, when they was up here to see if they had some different option to...
To vent?
To, yeah. To solve the problem.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause we didn't have any. Well, then yesterday we lost hot water.
Oh, we did.
So hopefully that's been...
What happened there?
Not sure. I'm hoping it's just the igniter went out.
Oh.
'Cause it would, you could light it, the pilot. And then it would get to a certain temperature and shove itself off, and when it did, it, the pilot went with it. So we thought maybe we were getting some backflow from that north wind for that temporary vent.
Yeah.
That might've been back feeding in and blowing it out, but I don't think so. So I think he's coming today to double check that.
Okay. Item A, new business.
No.
And I know, uh...
Have they been told about the auditors coming?
Oh, she is coming today. Dr. Miranda is coming with the auditor's office. I'm not sure what she's doing, but she's coming.
County audit.
Yeah, she's coming with county audit, okay.
Oh, really? Yeah. I mean, we were, it took us so long. We were next in line, I think.
Okay. Item A, new business. Commissioners comments. Dean, what do you have?
Well, it's New Month and with this cold weather, uh, we're kinda at a standstill as far as doing much of anything. Just gearing our equipment up and greased and cleaned up and ready to go for whenever it does thaw out, if we can do this stuff. Uh, we are, uh, over at Studing Point, we had, uh, we were required to mow it before we sowed it, so we're taking this opportunity when the ground's froze to be able to get around up there and mow it. And, uh, we were over there and it's still wet over there the other day. So hopefully it froze up hard enough, we can get around and, and get the dead, dead stuff knocked down. And, uh, so we can get a drill through it. We did find an old drill to, with discs on it to grill with, so we got that up and cleaned up and moved over and uh, just kinda preparing for that time when we get it, it's ready, you know? When the temperature warms up a little bit, we'll be able to go put some seed in and...
Yeah.
And, uh, that's about all we're doing is just treading water, you know?
Okay.
Waiting, that's all I got.
Okay. Well, we're having trouble with the cold weather, the stuff's freezing in the belly dumps and what come out of the trailers. And each load you haul, it gets a little thicker, so we've been fighting that. We've about got our locations cleaned up for the, that the oil field donated. We got, uh, half a mile of trees taken out up here by Jay Blueball's feedlot. So we can get the road ready for the bypass out there. I know he doesn't, Jay doesn't like the trucks and we're gonna try our best to keep the trucks off of that road during a detour and we'll try to reroute them down Red Hill Road instead of, uh, over there on Jay's road. But the oil field traffic isn't near as bad, so we think we'll be okay, you know, there. But, uh, if we get everything in plan, they're talking like September, uh, to get started on that. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, hope, you know, that works out. Legislation wise, uh, the, the bill that would allow counties to come in and do work inside a city limit, uh, fifteen thousand went ahead and passed committee. I know Roland Peterson, our representative senator, voted against it. Uh, talked to him, uh, texted him back and forth. He contacted me first and asked me where we stood on it, and I told him we did not support it because it makes... Puts more burden over on the county and it can be political, because if you get a town that has a, a group of people that live in town and you don't wanna come in and do work in their substation, they could vote against ya. You know, more condensed population and the rule would hurt, be hurt, because we don't have enough money to go around now. So we're, we'd like all the other officers to support that, that we do not support that bill and vote against it if you can. I know there's other legislation out there, I guess the, the gun legislation passed and is written into law. Scott, does that, how does that affect me with my concealed carry?
Well, with your concealed carry, you'll still be able to carry in other states that require that. So the constitutional carry bill that just passed...
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have to have a permit as of November first this year in Oklahoma, but that's only for Oklahoma. So if other states that are not constitutional carry, then you still would have to have a permit.
You'd have to have a permit.
They won't recognize or honor the outside carry, basically, obviously.
Well, without, it's the way it is now, you have to have that permit.
Right.
So states that still require permit, you'll still need to get a permit through the state of Oklahoma concealed carry.
Same thing with commercial vehicles and that type of thing in another state. It's their own state law.
Do what now?
It's their own state law. I mean, we've had truckers stopped from Oklahoma in Kansas and that, that's what the Highway Patrol in Kansas would tell them, is you're not in Oklahoma anymore. So they have to buy, abide by Kansas laws, too.
There are some states that honor the concealed carry.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, most states, it is reciprocal, so anybody that wants to continue to carry out of state would still need that permit to do so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, my concealed carry's coming up for renewal and I, I wanted to know whether I need even renew it, but you've answered that question.
Okay.
Yes.
Legislation wise, things have been going along pretty good. I went down to the, uh, ACCO last week and visited. Uh, of course, it was kinda bad weather when we had our breakfast and we didn't have as many people show up as we would like. Casey Murdock did show up and we had breakfast with him, got to visit about, uh, bills and stuff that were happening. Uh, but it's a busy time down there for them, the bills now, if they haven't been heard, uh, getting ready to switch houses and, uh, each one deal with the others. So their concealed carry happened to be one of the bills that, that passed before the other house had even got their bills set in order. They switched and passed already, so I guess that's a good thing. I don't know. That's, that's about it. Item ten, adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. At ten thirty.
So we're required to renew if we're just gonna carry it along?
Aye, correct.
Aye.
Aye.
Now, if you get Alex, I'll give you to shut that off.
After the number six, sir.
Yeah.
As of...
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, we're good.
Hey, you did do it, thank you.
Put your hand up, sir.
But if you're stopped, you still have to tell.
No, only when asked by law enforcement, you're required to.
Really?
Yeah.
Ooh.
It's... But yes, you're only be required to dispose that if asked, so then it just becomes a training issue for law enforcement, it just goes ask.
Just a risk.
Yeah.
That's easier than the public forget.
That's true.
I'm packing heat. I don't have to ask for it to use your gun anymore, will I?
No. Oh, man. Well, I'll go see what's in my box.
Yeah, there's a bunch of things.
Is there?
I noticed I had some papers in there.
Okay.
But I don't make it up here probably as much as you.
Well, I've been by here a few times here lately, a few more times than what, you know?